All right, looks like we have a green light. We're ready to go. I'm going to call this meeting to order. City Council meeting for May 18, 2021. And I'm immediately going to turn this meeting over and the gavel over to Steve Fields, so he can run the meeting from the chambers. So Steve, please take the meeting over from this point. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Waters. Ms. C, can you call, call roll call, please?
Ms. Curler?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
That was a here for Ms. Quaidno.
Thank you. Mr. Fields?
Here.
And Mrs. Bishop previously informed staff that she may be arriving late to this meeting. I don't see her locked in.
She's looking in right now.
Okay, excellent. I'm just going to wait a moment, then I'll, I'll call her.
Perfect.
That was muted. Your eight, my eight was muted.
Well, that's funny, because it's been muted before, but okay.
You never want to mute that.
I'll learn one of these days there.
Oh, look at this.
Okay.
Let me want to go over here.
Okay, we're all set.
Proceed with roll call. Mrs. Bishop?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, next, number four would be Corrections and Approval of the Council Minutes from May 4th.
Move to approve the City Council Minutes on May 4th, 2021.
That was a motion by Mr. Waters, taken in by Ms. Curler. Any discussion? Otherwise, we'll call a roll.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quaidno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passed by zero.
Moving to number five, Correspondence. We can start with you, Mr. Waters.
I had no correspondence since the last meeting.
Ms. Bishop?
I've had none, thank you.
Ms. Quaidno?
None, thank you.
I heard from one constituent regarding garlic mustard at Katyrina Park.
And I had one constituent ask about our communications on Water Street. If our resource officer was making contact with people, they haven't had anybody visit their house, and they've only had one notice, so I'll follow up on that. All right, moving on to number eight, Council Board Reports. Those will be put on record in the meeting minutes. Oh, I'm sorry, City Managers Report. Skip that one. Number seven.
Number six, Questions and Public Comment.
Good, I'm jumping ahead here. Sorry about that. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided. We have nobody in chambers. Not hearing anything. We'll move on to number seven, the City Managers Report. Is Steve with us?
I do not see Mr. Wilkie logged in.
Okay, this is going to go quick tonight. Then we're going to number eight, the Council Member Board Reports. Those will just be put into the minutes. Okay, so does anybody want to make a comment on board minutes?
Yes, I would like to. As far as the Parks Board is concerned, regarding the minutes from April, I want to just highlight because we're coming up to a time when I'll be talking with Steve and with Dan about what exactly wording is how, is how we want to do this. But there is a proposal for a library story walk over at Wallace Park. And what that is, is if I'm not mistaken, there will be stands with pieces of a book that go through, and the children would go through the forest part of story, of Wallace Park, to do a path of reading a story and come back around to where the playground is. So they are looking at possibly starting that in the summer. I wanted to make sure that was on your docket. And then...
So that's probably a future agenda item?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Probably a future agenda item when I can get the motion written up with the powers that be. And then there's also something to just be aware of with regard to the boat lifts at Sandy Beach. Some concerns about the waitlist of the boat lifts and how that will be possibly changed. We have not come to a conclusion yet as to how that's going to change or if that's going to change, but just letting you know.
Excellent. Have anything else? Anybody else have follow-up on their board reports? If not, we'll move on to number nine, A, Discussion Decision on Rock Lake Cemetery Path. I think that was going to come back with the corrections on the paperwork.
Mr. Fields, since I didn't see any new paperwork with this agenda, should we continue to table it until the next meeting? Is that the proper way?
At this time, I would agree with that, because I haven't seen anything new on it. There was no paperwork attached with our agenda. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I can't hear Dan when he's talking.
Dan, he said that the Comprehensive Plan will have all the updates for us at the next meeting, that we should just leave it tabled, and it'll automatically be on our agenda for next time.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to B then. Discussion Decision on a Bid Award Contract for Lake Mills Light and Water. Ms. C, can you read that for us?
One moment. City Council Motion 21-5-2-1, authorizing city manager and city clerk to execute an agreement for contract LM4-Electric, Lake Mills Light and Water, Multiple-Year Underground Electric Facility Installation Unit Pricing.
All right, entertain a motion on this one.
I move to adopt the contract for LM4 Electric.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Dan, is this something you'll be filling us in on a little bit?
I think Paul Hermanson is online, and he's probably logged in.
Okay, yep, I do see him. Paul?
Good evening. I'll just highlight a couple of things. I know you've got a number of documents in regard to this item. First of all, this did go in front of the Public Works Board, and they did recommend it for adoption. Real quick, what it is, it's an agreement or a contract with, in this case, Peeper, to do underground work that... Let me back up after that. This is something new for us. Typically, when we do a contract like this, we have a project, if you will, that, that we bid out and, and different companies send in their proposals. In this case, we don't necessarily have a project. What we have is a need more than anything, and that is to kind of keep up with some of the growth that's going on in the city as far as getting our electric infrastructure in. And so we're trying something different, and it's something that has been done in some other communities. And basically, as it says in some of the, the information there, this is kind of a backup plan for us, so that if our crews are not able to get underground electric in fast enough to meet the needs of developers and the growth and that sort of thing, that we can go with this company, and they can help us out. There's no cost to this contract. If we don't use them, we do not guarantee any of the contractors, they will get any work in any particular year. They basically are giving us unit prices, so that if we need to tap into their services, we do at a predetermined price. Two things about the contract then. Number one is that although it states it's for multiple years, it may not be. At the end of the year, toward the end of the year, we will get together with this contractor, and we'll look at what they're, they're planning for any kind of escalator in price. And if that's not acceptable to us, then that contract ends. If it is, then we'll carry it through another year. And I believe the contract calls for a maximum of three years under those conditions. So that's basically it. It's a little something different. It's something we're trying, just to make sure that we've got some, like I say, some backup in the event that we need to move a little quicker than our crew can.
Paul, have we worked with this contractor in the past?
Yes, we have. We've done actually quite a bit of work with them. When we did most of our voltage conversion around the lake and some, some of the outside of the downtown area, Peeper, we worked with them quite extensively. In fact, I think we had at least three one-year contracts with them during that process. So we know them well, we know their work, and very comfortable with having them involved
I think we still maybe aren't hearing you, Dan, on the record. So I'll ask it. Paul, I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about the bid process. I noticed that, you know, certain line items, each company came in with a little bit different prices, but Peeper was the low bid overall. Could you just talk about that?
Sure, be glad to. And again, because this is a little different contract, we had our engineer involved extensively with this. What we did is put together some scenarios, if you will, of very likely things to have happened. The biggest one is, is boring underground conduit in, whether it's two-inch, three-inch, four-inch. And so we took those very common items and separated them out in the initial bid proposal, so that the different contractors could, could bid on similar items. And then, in the analysis, the engineer took those items, again, just exactly what we probably will be using if we get a chance to use them, and simply compared one to another. And we had two very close contractors, as you saw, Peeper and then, oh, I don't have it in front of me, but I, I forget the name of the other company. But when we analyzed again against the most likely services that we would use, Peeper came out as the best bidder. The only other comment I'll make there, if I may, and this is a little off, off what you asked, quite honestly, we were very surprised we got eight bids. We were hoping for three or four. And so I think contractors are recognizing two things, that this is going to become a little more common as cities need to respond a little quicker to develop and that sort of thing. And the other part of it is, of course, that the contractors want to build a relationship with us, so that down the road, if there are other bids, that we do know who they are, we've seen that they've bid, and again, we, we have some kind of relationship with them. I don't anticipate, I'll put it the other way, I do anticipate doing this again in the future. So after this one expires, I can see us doing something like this again, because really, it's kind of a win-win for us. You know, we, we've got a backup plan, and there's no cost to us unless we need that backup plan. Does that answer the question? Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Fields, may I? I'll have another question.
Absolutely.
Paul, just another question, you, we don't have the actual contract in front of us. You said it would be for three years, so when it says multi-year, does that mean it can be extended but to a maximum of three years, and then you would do a new contract and new bidding at that time?
You are correct. Maximum of three years, really a minimum of one.
Any other questions for Paul? If we have no other questions, Ms. C, can you pull, call, call a roll, please?
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quaidno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passed by zero.
All right, move on to Resolution 21-29, a Safe Drinking Water Loan Program. Ms. C, can you read that one for us, please?
City of Lake Mills Resolution 21-29, Resolution Authorizing Execution of the Department of Natural Resources Principal Forgiven Financial Assistance Agreement.
I'll move adoption of Resolution 21-29 regarding the DNR Principal Forgiveness Financial Assistance Agreement.
All right, I have a motion by Ms. Curler and seconded in by Ms. Quaidno. Is there any discussion on this? Dan, is this one you would take, or does this go back to Paul again? Back to Paul.
Well, that'll be nice, because that's not that common. But this one is, is something we've been working on for quite some time. At least five years, we've been working to remove the lead service lines in Lake Mills, with particular emphasis on helping residents pay at least part of the cost of removing their lines. I'll just highlight a couple of things on this. You probably don't have a ton of background, but we have gone through the entire city, at least the areas that we know are old enough to have lead service lines, and identified every location. So we have a very, very good and specific idea of how many lead service lines there are in the city, where they are, and what it'll take to get them removed. And initially, there was a round of funding that expired actually officially in 2020, and, or 2019, actually, I think it officially expired, and it was kind of extended a little bit. But this is the next round of funding. And under this round of funding, about $63 million was set aside by the DNR for this, this cause, to help residents replace their lead service lines. This one is different than the initial funding program in that it is a one-year program, or a one-year program with the opportunity to go several years. Depends on how long the funding lasts. It also opens up where, or who is eligible for the money to replace their lead service lines. In the original round of funding, it was purely residential and/or daycare and schools. In this one, it's opened up a little more to virtually any place there's a lead service line, especially in places where there are residences. What I'm talking about in that case, of course, is something downtown where there's a business with residents on the second floor or whatever. So this now is open to allow them to replace their lead service lines. So we applied for funding, and we applied initially for about 30 replacements. And we were doing that based on where we would be reconstructing streets, and where we could, or how we could kind of take care of the people on the waiting list from the first round of funding. We had about 20, 25 people that wanted to replace their lead service lines, but the initial round of funding ran out, and so we put them on a waiting list with the hope and understanding that there would be some more dollars available. As we got to evaluating the fund and what we viewed as the potential for it continuing beyond the first year, we decided it would probably be in the best interest, and we're offering this as part of our, our plan here, it would be in the best interest to expand the number of lead service lines that we would go after in any given year, and try to eliminate all of the known lead service lines within three years. So that's where we now base the 75 lead service lines in '21. We hope to do the same thing in '22 and then in '23. This will be contingent on how much money is left in this overall, this $63 million kitty. But it gives us a darn good start. And I should just add here that according to DNR rules, we have to replace a minimum of 7% of all known LSL laterals in the city. So this keeps us way ahead of that pace also. The other thing I want to mention, and so we, I'm sorry, I'll back up. We applied for 75 replacements. We had an estimated cost of between $210,000 or something like that, and $250,000. Ultimately, the DNR granted us $300,000 to make sure that we had enough, and so tonight's motion, or tonight's resolution, is in essence to accept that $300,000. If we do not spend that, if, if our total reimbursements do not equal that, we're not penalized, that money simply goes back into the main kitty, and then everybody reapplies in 2022. And more than likely, we've been told, more than likely, if we reapply in 2022, we will continue to get funding until that large kitty is exhausted. So we're going to keep doing that. And so then the other thing I want to mention, and it, it's extremely important to this process, is that of course, every time that a resident replaces their portion of the lead service line, and I don't know how much you know about how this is set up, but there, there's a line that comes off the main, comes into a valve, and then there's a line that goes from the valve into the individual residence. The portion from the, what we call the curb stop, or the valve into the house, is the responsibility of the homeowner. The portion from that valve back to the main line is the responsibility of the city, or of Lake Mills Light and Water. And although it's not an absolute rule, it's a very, very strong recommendation from the DNR that if the resident replaces their side of the service line, the city really must replace theirs, otherwise we've really achieved nothing. And so we have to keep in mind the cost for the city to do that. And that's another one of the limiting factors, or another one of the reasons we set this up as a seven, or excuse me, as a three-year project, so that we would have enough funding in the light, light and water to keep up with these replacements. So with that in mind, what we're doing initially, what we're doing this year, is replacing as many resident service lines where we have already replaced ours, or it's known to be non-led. And that gives us a good start in 2021. As we get further into the program, of course, that won't be the case. When the resident replaces theirs, we'll have to replace ours. And our experience has been, that's to the cost of about $5,000 a replacement. So we're going to be very, very cautious and, and very well aware of the finances for doing that. Bottom line, this is a very good thing to do, and so accepting this money is, is, is the right thing to do, if you will, to get rid of as many of these service lines, these lead service lines as possible. And so as I indicated in the memo, our recommendation is, of course, to accept this funding and start getting folks reimbursed for replacing their lead service lines.
Paul, how many lead lateral services do we have left in the city to replace yet?
75 times three. What would that be, 180-some, I think, somewhere in the ballpark?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and just so you know, we started off with somewhere around 300. In the first round of funding, we did almost 120 replacements.
Mr. Hermanson, how would a resident know if they have a lead service line, and then how do they get on the list?
Okay, very good. They know, they know they have a lead service line, because like I said, we went to every single house in Lake Mills that had, that was built before 1970 or 1972, I believe. We know that after that time, no lead service lines were installed. So we literally had Brian Kane, who is city staff, go to every single house, go to every single basement, and look at every single pipe. And then we kept that inventory. And so all of those folks have, have been notified that they do have a lead service If, if you read through the, the document I sent you, that we identified some priorities or some criteria, so that we can get to all these service lines. Basically, though, everybody's on the list. I mean, we, we have the inventory list, and if this year somebody decides this year they want to change out their lead service line, and we still have funding available, we'll work with them. If we get to the end of the year, toward the end of the construction season, and we know we don't have any more dollars left, then we put them on the waiting list, just as we did previously, and we reapply for more funding. So there does, it, there's a little bit of, we're playing the odds a little bit, that we'll continue to get funding over the next few years. But by establishing the criteria in our priority list, we hope that we can make this a nice,
Paul, I want to just compliment you for your ambitious goal. I think three years is, is ambitious, from what you described in terms of the cost to the city and, you know, the logistics for your staff to respond. But, you know, this is such a critical public health issue, that I think trying to get it done in three years is, is very admirable. And like you said, hopefully the state funding will can, can continue, because I think, I remember, if I remember right, it's like a 75% cost share to the property owner, right? So that's a, it's a good deal for them.
So wondering about that, Paul?
Yeah, and we've, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I apologize. Go ahead. No, you go ahead, I think, I know where you're going, but go ahead.
Darn technology. In thinking about homeowners, and you're saying it's about a $5,000 replacement cost, is that correct?
That the $5,000 figure is the cost for the city to replace its portion of the lead service line. We have found, and I think this is in the memo, I don't have it in front of me, but we have had now three years of experience, and I think we've found that the cost to the residents ranges from like 1,500 to, in some cases, just a short of $5,000.
Okay, and what, um, sorry, let me find my words here. The only concern I would think of is that if a homeowner is in a financial situation where they could not afford a $5,000 replacement of the lead lines, even though, yes, they do want to fix it and know that it would be appropriate. it would be appropriate for public health, I'm noticing here that there are, on your, apologies, on the Lead Service Line Replacement Project document, on page 3, with the requirement or the replacement criteria in order of priority, I noticed on number 7 that there, I'm sorry, number 8, that there would be financial assistance. Did I miss something where that was documented in here about what that financial assistance could look like? Or is it referring to the cost share part?
Well, it's partially, certainly the cost share part, but we are also prepared. We don't have, we haven't had it happen, and we're not sure if it's going to happen, but we're prepared to do something similar to what we do with other costs like this, where we could put them on the tax roll for X number of years, you know, like a sidewalk or something like that, and spread that cost out. We're more than willing to work with people. Quite honestly, if somebody wants to replace their lead service line, and that money is an issue, we're going to figure out a way to do it. And I think the putting it on the tax roll or setting up some kind of an amortization is going to be the best way to do that.
Okay. So basically, people just need to get in contact with the city to arrange payment options? Is that what I'm hearing?
That's what you're hearing. And the only thing that will affect that is if this big kitty of money runs out. And we'll make sure people are aware of that, that, you know, if in 2023, that funding's not available, then to a certain extent, our program may have to change direction. There are other options, and rather than, you know, get into those things that may or may not happen, I will tell you that we may have some other options to help fund those programs, or this program, after next year. We're pretty confident about this year and next year. It's the third year that gets a little tough.
Thank you, Paul.
Anybody have any other questions? If not, we'll ask Missy to call the roll, please.
Ms. Quinno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Is that Curler or Bishop?
Ms. Curler.
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Next is Item D, Resolution 21-30, County Highway Aid. Entertain a motion on this one?
Do you want me to read the title?
Yes, please.
Resolution 21-30, Petition for County Highway Aid.
All right. Now we'll entertain a motion, please.
I move to adopt Resolution 21-30, Petition for County Highway Aid. Second.
It's a motion by Mrs. Bishop, second by Ms. Curler, or Quinno, sorry, Ms. Quinno. This one, Dan, would this be you or Paul? Just a brief overview.
Yeah, this is an annual, uh, we agree with that we chip how we want to.
Nope, we can't hear you.
Not yet.
I can kind of wing this one maybe a little bit, Dan. Just could have been through it a couple of times.
Yeah.
Okay. I know, just because we've been through this a few times before, this is
All right. This is an annual program where we put this 3297 into the county, and then they match that money for projects that the county provides for us. So this is something that we do annually. It doubles a little bit of our revenue for roadwork.
If anybody has any questions? If not, Missy, can we call the roll, please?
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinno?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
All right. That moves us on to Item E, Resolution 21-31, Claim Against the City. Missy, can you read that one for us, please?
Resolution 21-31, Action on Claim Presented by the Estate of Thomas C. Reynolds for Damage to Boatlift at Sandy Beach Alleged Should Been Caused by Lake Mills Parks Department.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 21-31.
I second.
All right. I get a motion by Mr. Waters, and second by Mrs. Bishop?
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's only, sorry, Ms. Quinno.
Okay. Hi, I'm going to use this microphone. I believe you all are familiar with this claim. We did receive response after submission to the insurance company. They recommend disallowance. I've provided a memo along with the, or a breakdown of the letters that were discussed and provided, the claim itself. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to entertain those at this point. The city's recommendation is to disallow the claim, which will trigger the shortened filing time limit for the claimants in this situation. We largely do this at the recommendation of our insurer. I believe there's a number of defenses to the claim that has been presented, and a number of ambiguities that we just don't know the answer to at this point. So the appropriate venue to move forward with this claim would be Circuit Court in the event that you do choose to disallow it at this point.
Mr. Drescher, can I just ask, so to make sure that we're crystal clear, approval of this motion would be disallowing the claim. Is that correct?
That is correct. That is the affirmative action, disallowance.
Are there any questions for Dan? If not, Missy, I'll ask you to call the roll.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
All right. That moves us to Item F, Resolution 21-32, Authorizing Reduction of Financial Guarantee, Tyrenia Point. Missy, could you read that for us, please?
City of Lake Mills, Resolution 21-32, Reduction of Financial Guarantee, Tyrenia
I move that we approve Resolution 21-32 regarding reduction of financial guarantee for Tyrenia Point subdivision.
Second.
All right. I had a motion by Ms. Curler, and second by Mrs. Bishop. I think I got it right this time.
Again, I'm going to leave this one to Brandon Herbert. Corey O'Donnell, the developer, on behalf of Grandma and Loose Homes, is also on line right now, if you have any questions for him. Yeah, Brandon, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Dan. So this is in regards to Tyrenia Point, the subdivision down on the south end of the city, up of Mud Lake Road. You may have seen that they've been busy at work there this spring, constructing the underground utilities mostly so far. They now have the roadway base course most of the way in, and we're expecting curb and gutter quite soon. So I guess the letter kind of details where they, where they're at. I guess the request came in, and it's important to note that at the date of the request, he had requested certain percentages of areas of work that were done at that time. Since the date of that request, there has been additional work completed. And so as the letter, you know, discusses, this would be an appropriate reduction, according to city code. They meet the 40% minimum threshold for the value of work completed. And so from 40 to 75% of the value of public improvements completed, they can ask for a reduction. And the value of the letter of credit or the financial guarantee is reduced to 125% of the city's consulting engineer's estimate of remaining public improvements. And so that's what the letter has, has, I guess, laid out, is that the estimate of the remaining public improvements, I believe, was in here, I think maybe in one of the attachments.
Brandon, this stated in the resolution, the remaining public improvements are in the amount of $547,578.13.
Okay. Which would leave a reduction of $458,710.40. So I guess I would recommend that that's an appropriate reduction of the letter of credit or the financial guarantee. I would also add that this is important to note, that the letter discusses that this is for Phase 2 improvements only. Phase 1 was the stormwater pond and a few other things that were done last year. There is a letter, a separate letter of credit, or financial guarantee, I should say, for that area of work that has not been fully reduced yet. So the city has not accepted those quite yet, and it's not appropriate this time to fully reduce that or eliminate that letter of credit. So I just wanted to make that clear, that there is kind of two separate financial instruments here for this project.
Any questions?
I have a question. Would it be important to identify that this is for Phase 2 in the resolution, or is there some other kind of numbering or something that makes that clear?
The letter of credit that we're discussing is specifically with regard to Phase 2 internal utility improvements. So I think it's clear. It wouldn't hurt if you, if you think that's a necessary add, we can certainly amend it.
Okay. No, I just wanted to make sure that that's because there are two of them, that there's not confusion later. Thanks.
Mr. Herbert, you mentioned on the second page of your letter that we're coming up on the one-year warranty period, and that it may be desirable to wait. Why would that be the case?
Great question, Ms. Bishop. Because at the one-year warranty period, the city may completely release that letter of credit. And so since there's only $27,000 left, he, the developers certainly could request a reduction further, which would, I believe the city code says that you have to keep 10% of the value of the public improvements. So in that case, this would be about $9,000. But it would seem, you know, you'd have to go through this process twice to, you know, break up $27,000, that it just, I would recommend just waiting to, you know, kind of go through that one-year warranty walkthrough, and just fully accept the stormwater improvements, and fully remove the letter of credit there. That was the only reason for the recommendation, is just to avoid kind of procedural things for everybody, you know, both council, developer requesting it, letters from me, things like that. That was the main reason.
And I think it's important to point out, thanks, Brandon, that the action to reduce the first letter of credit, the $90,000 letter of credit, that was completed by the council last August. So we are approaching that one-year period, and we anticipate another request from the developer in this circumstance, which will probably actually dissipate the entirety of that letter of credit, because the one-year warranty period will be up, as well as he'll probably make another draw on this one, assuming that he has a substantial amount of work completed at that point. So we're trying to just be more efficient, and kind of bundle it all up.
Yeah. I would add, though, that my understanding is that if the developer did want to request another reduction of that Phase 1 financial guarantee, that is totally as prerogative, and I believe we would be obligated to move that forward. But I just was a recommendation on my part for all parties, I guess.
Yeah, I agree with that statement. That's accurate.
I'm going to rephrase my question, just to make sure I understand what you gentlemen were saying. And it's that the recommendation to wait until the warranty period was over was only in relation to Phase 1 and that letter of credit, and not combining our consideration on the Phase 2 letter of credit today?
Yes, that's my understanding, exactly. The one-year warranty period is coming for the Phase 1 infrastructural improvements that were, the letter of credit was reduced prior to last August, council action last August. Nothing is, well, the infrastructure that is complete, that he's receiving a reduction for today, still has to go through a full-year warranty period before the ultimate 10% could be reduced, and the whole thing could be gone. We anticipate this project being at a position where potentially that happens next year on the second letter of credit, with the thought that the first letter of credit will be completely absolved by that point, probably this August, when it's truly one year from the previous reduction.
Any other questions? If not, Missy, can we call the roll, please?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
That brings us to Item 10, Recommendations for Future Agendas. Does anybody have anything they'd like to discuss? Brad?
I have one. Just looking back through the last few months, I realized that Steve Wilkie had talked with us about the Sandy Beach restaurant, which I think is the second phase of the overall Sandy Beach work back in the second meeting in March. And obviously, we've had shifts in our membership and so forth since then. But at that time, he indicated it was something that the council, you know, should start to move on. So I don't know exactly what the next steps are, but I know there was a presentation that a consultant provided to the prior council. There's a feasibility study, you know, there's some phases, and I wonder if maybe the next step would be just for us to get that presentation, so we're all up to speed on what the prior council decided. And then we can decide, you know, what's the next, next steps in the direction. So, sorry, that was kind of long-winded, but I guess just sort of like next steps on Sandy Beach. I think the other thing I'm real sensitive to, since, you know, we had a citizen from the township come last, last meeting, is, you know, what sort of public participation or public information do we want to do, you know, as we move forward?
Okay, thank you.
This may be for one of our more planning-related meetings, but I would like the council to eventually consider and discuss a digital security plan, and maybe emergency response plan. And that may mean we establish a committee, especially in light of what we've seen with the water treatment plants in Florida and the pipeline attack on the East Coast, I think it's important to address here.
All right. Is there anything else? If not, I think that'll do it for tonight. I'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.